All right, everyone, let's rise for the pledge. The flag is over my left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual for the Virginia justice for all.
All right, everyone, welcome and thank you. Board members, we're minus two, so I've asked Eric to be our stand-in secretary for the meeting. For any of you who may be here to speak during unscheduled...Eric, attendance, please?
Sure. President Donnelly?
Here.
Vice President Thorne?
Here.
Secretary Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Justy John Conroe?
Here.
Justy Foster?
Here.
Justy Hammond?
Present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thorne, any changes to the board agenda?
None.
All right. Board members, we have before us a consent agenda. Minutes of the October 28th meeting, bill is payable October 2021, so new pyre recommendation information. Would somebody like to put that motion on the floor? Eric? Did I see your hand, Eric? Oh, Corey, thank you.
I approve the consent agenda presented.
Thank you, Chad, support. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four on the agenda, prearranged request to address the board. Kristen Nguyen from Lakeville.
Hello, could you name up Kristen Nguyen, Prince Will at Lakeville? Thank you for giving me this opportunity to give you a snapshot of the learning that's taking place at Lakeville over the last year and a little bit over the new year. Welcome, everyone. Just a few snapshots of things that we've been doing to start. In the upper left, our welcome back event for our kinders with our beloved mascot of Paws. At Lakeville, we attended homecoming, and you can see some of our people holding the banner. And the bottom feature is Walk to School Day that recently happened last month. Some survey data from our survey from the 2020-2021 school year. According to our parents, a high percentage of our parents and guardians would recommend Lakeville to a family member seeking a school. They rated our quality as excellent to good, indicated that Lakeville uphold high learning standards for all students, and indicated that Lakeville is a special school where a staff member is always available to help students if needed. Some action items that we noticed. We unfortunately only have room for participants in our survey, so we really need to focus on that regard. Some of our parents and guardians would like better explanations of acronyms such as like SBL, social emotional learning, HADP, or FOMC, or now scoring systems, and asked that we do whatever we can to continue to simplify parent communication. Some comments that I'd like to highlight. Lakeville, keep doing what you're doing. Thank you for all you've done this year for our students. A lot of grateful parents that are in grade, graduation, or fifth grade end of the year is not late. One of the things that we noted is that we haven't made this year, and we just didn't do it, we didn't love. Our building survey data, this is coming from our staff members. They rate, according to our staff members, they rate the quality of Lakeville in the excellent-to-good range. They indicate that our students are engaged in academic activities that are designed to promote growth, and they believe that school administrator, which is what we need, is available and responsible for staff. Action items, again, our staff participation was about 15%. I don't know about COVID, Lakeville, but during that. And they would like continued professional learning on diversity, trauma-sensitive students, and social-emotional well-being for all. They have comments, which I'd like to bring out. We're proud of our district for staying open last year, while most did not. Lakeville is a very supportive staff, it's a wonderful place to work. I'm surrounded by the people that I learned from and who are truly inspiring people. Lakeville staff is amazing, and this is a big highlight for Lakeville, its family. It's family in Lakeville. We all take care of each other, and we got each other's back. Some school improvement. Items that we're working on. You heard clearly at the University of Louisville last month. We are working on what I can time, all the I can time, time, and a designated time throughout the school day with the course of the week to help our students in any way that they might need, academically, behaviorally. And we're also working on our PBIS. Aftern stands for Positive Behavioral Interceptions and Support, making a school-wide system. We're actively in the planning stages, and this will be, you know, years to come, planning, implementing, designing, revising. And this year, in February 2022, we do have our site visit for International Baccalaureate. They're coming to the school. Actively part of our preparing for that. Points of pride. You'll see there our beloved Paws mascot, welcoming students on our welcome back to school events. We have a Lakeville leadership team, otherwise known as the Student Council. We are sponsoring art clubs, we have family events. Sort of practices is a large part of what we do. We live the life of a learning profile. It's in everything we do, from our language to our actions. And we celebrate at each one at our virtual Paws assembly, which I'll show you in just a minute. We have several student incentives. We have coffee in the evening, cards, we have rad pads, which kids truly love, and go above and beyond term. And your faculty field trips, which is amazing. We either do fifth grade camp last year, and we'll continue that this year, and then our beloved college. Some of the things that we've done this year in October. Parents and students participated in an outdoor drug trade event, less than how we had. We recently went to the Oxford Fire Station in October, and it was one of the best visits I've ever had in any fire station. It was the right amount of education with fun. They were amazing. So, thank you Oxford Fire Station, for taking this thing. And this is a example of our Lakeville virtual Paws assemblies that we do every month. It's pretty neat because the teachers all jump on Zoom, and this is projected in the classroom, and you can see the different classrooms. They love seeing themselves on the board, and kids get acknowledged, and everybody stands up and cheers. And we do this every school month, and the kids absolutely love it. Yeah, love it. So, because we haven't been conjugating in the whole school, in the cafeteria, in the gym, this is the mode that we went to, and it's been great. It's a good thing it's not over there. I feel like it's a great thing. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thanks so much.
Eric? Can you comment your question? Come on, Mary. Go away, come on, this is your chance.
Well, thank you, President Donnelly. Miss Will, thank you so much. I miss being at the building. I'm looking forward to maybe by March, that things come, read the books. Everybody's doing a fabulous job. It's so wonderful to hear these stories. And y'all make me cry.
I know, I think the last time I was up, I'm gonna cry.
Yeah, I love the stories. I love to hear everybody doing so well. You know, you find a way to do it. You know, you find a way to make it work. So, congratulations to you. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. You're wonderful students.
Yes, sir?
Kristen, thank you. A lot to be proud of there. I love the members present, I think that's a veteran. Actually, one thing that stood out to me is the low serving participation. I don't know, I'm not pointing at you specifically, because this isn't the first time we've seen it swap down to the last two, three months, right? I don't know what the answer is, but if we can somehow figure out how to get that participation up. First off, I believe we're, I think we're hearing the good feedback. I don't know, but we're going to go larger, larger process.
Tell them a pizza grinder contest. Class that gets the most surveys in has pizza.
Yeah.
You'll get surveys. Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We move to item number five, Board of Education Matters. And first, we have a Graduation Alliance graduate, Angelina Snyder. But Angelina, before you come up, Jill, why do you have such a captive audience? Explain Graduation Alliance and what it is that Angelina has accomplished.
Absolutely. So, a few years back, with our board support, we started this program for dropout recovery. So, it's not only for students who've already dropped out, it's for students who are at risk of dropping out, who are significantly behind in credits, or maybe have different family circumstances, or are going through some sort of hardship that's making it difficult for them to achieve their diploma within the typical setting that we would expect. And so, it's open to any of our second-year students who are 16 years or older and up through 19 years old. And Angelina is one of those successful students we've had. Now, she just makes her 31st graduate, 31 and 32. Angelina has another student of her cohort who's not here this evening. We have two graduates this month. They work solely online with a local mentor. It's not through our virtual academy, it's actually through a provider called Grad Alliance, but they do the 18 Michigan merit curriculum credits, and work in really creative ways and a very flexible schedule to complete those credits. So, it really speaks to students who have grit, students who are able to work through hardship, and we're really proud of those graduates that get a crossroads diploma. And I'm excited that Angelina is able to join us tonight if she wants to come up and receive the congratulations.
Thank you so much. And yes, she is coming up, because I already twisted her arm. So, she's gonna come up, and Mr. Thorne and I are gonna come here and shake your hand. And family members, if anybody wants to come take a picture, come do that. Truly proud of your accomplishment. We'll get that certificate to you as soon as possible. And family, congratulations as well. All right, we're on the 5B. Whoops, turn the volume on, there we go. We're on the 5B, Resurrection to the Hope County Health Division and the Officer of the Governor of the State of Michigan. So, we are going to open that up for some discussion. Yes, sir?
Before we do that, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion, lay a motion, hold on this topic until the next unscheduled meeting.
Explain the reason?
Till we are complete.
Wanting all seven. Is there a second? That motion, then we can discuss it. Chad, second. All right, so let's discuss. Is your motion, what would be the rationale for wanting the seven?
I think this is a big enough discussion that we need full opinion.
Please, please, please. Audience participation is somewhere around 11 or 12. All right. So, what you're saying is, is that you're putting this motion on because you believe the topic is important enough, that you want to vote for all seven members recording?
Correct.
Got it. Got it. Would that secure some seconds, Dave? Okay. Any other discussion as to that, to that motion? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I am still going to do a presentation on this topic, because a lot of work has been done since the last, since that meeting of the resolution. Please, please, this is not a dialogue. This is a board meeting. It's not a dialogue. Sir, it's the same reason that I asked you to leave my business. You can't just dominate a discussion. You just can't. You have a chance to speak, and unscheduled audience participation. You've come into my office twice. You harassed me, and you harassed me in the visit, and I kicked you out. Stop. Enough. Sir, this is, everyone else is quiet. You haven't been quiet.
I asked whether they weren't.
You can't ask questions now.
You used a piece of paper that said it would be voted on tonight, and now you just...
All right, let's move on. This is not appropriate. You have a chance to speak later.
And I'm asking. You've got a chance to speak later.
So, if you pull up the resolution and get to the therefore's. The therefore's were that the Oxford Community School Board of Education officially requests reconciliation of conflict from the governor's office and from the Hope County Health Division. So, that was the first therefore. Second therefore, if the reconciliation of conflict is unattainable, please rescind the order. The third therefore, if there is no resolution by October 29th, our board will put forth a motion to allow Oxford Community Schools to transition back to the planned processes and procedures developed prior to the mask mandate being implemented. The Oxford Community School District will strongly recommend the wearing of masks, but will allow each family to determine what is right for them. If the motion passed, this change would be effective the day after the board's affirmative vote. A date in work, the 29th, so it would have been the 28th. I received the following response from the Hope County Health Division. So, is there a scroll up on that? A scroll up? Yes. I just want them to see this from the Hope County Health and Human Services, and Leanne Stafford. The reason why it is addressed at Mr. Thorne is because Superintendent Thorne is the one who, on behalf of the board, sent messages to the Hope County Health Division, sent messages to our two representatives, and also ultimately sending a request to our Attorney General. And I'll get to that in a second. The response from the Hope County Health Department is here, but I want to take note of just simply the last paragraph, or the last sentence. To the extent that the resolution requests a reconciliation of a conflict beyond which the county has already shared, the county does not believe that a conflict exists. It is our opinion that the sections of the SB 82 that reference local public health departments are not constitutional. So, ultimately, the Hope County Health Department, their response, which I simply want, I'm not looking for your agreement or disagreement, I'm just letting you know the response I got from them was they believe there is no conflict, that we as board members aren't in a conflict because SB 82 is not constitutional. Rosemary Baer, our senator, appealed to the governor, and also our Attorney General, and so did Mr. Ryland. It took some time for us to understand that we were not going to get a response from the Attorney General, because the Attorney General cannot speak to something that certainly has, that has current litigation to it. And we just didn't know. We were wondering why we weren't hearing anything, and then all of a sudden, we're told that there is already a lawsuit or some litigation that they're involved in, and so they've gotta be mute until that gets taken care of, because any kind of statement that might make could affect that litigation. But we did get from Rosemary Baer the response from our governor that she gave to all of our, to all legislature, into the whole state on September 29th. So, if you'll scroll down, I think. Keep going, keep going. Stop there. That's it. Scroll a little bit, thank you. The date, there it is. On September 29th, she signed the SB 82 into law, right? Everybody knows that, and so it went into effect October 1st. And she talks about, to senators and representatives, she, this is a letter that she attached after the signing of it to them. And so, she's thanking them for this bipartisan budget and that. But if you scroll down, one, two, third paragraph, where it says the Public Health Code, thank you. The Public Health Code gives health officials the tools they need to protect people from epidemic diseases like COVID-19. The legislature cannot unwind the Public Health Code in a budget bill or appropriate funds because they take issue with the actions of the local health department. Budget boilerplate that supports to prohibit state or local health officials from issuing masks and quarantine orders or to penalize local health departments for using their powers under the Public Health Code violates the Michigan Constitution. Consistent with my duty to uphold the Constitution, I will not allow the unconstitutional budget language to take effect. To both of them, no. To just our Hope County Health Division, I responded with a letter. It's the next document? Good morning, Mr.? Yeah, that's it. Unsatisfied with the response that I got from the Hope County Health Division, and knowing that what I got from the governor was the same thing that she gave everyone on the 29th of September, I more deeply dug into the true questions that we had in the wheres and therefores. And so, I want to take you to the third paragraph that says we are aware. We are aware of Hope County Health Division's opinion on this matter, and similarly hear this opinion stated by our governor as she signed the bill into law. However, we are seeking the opinion of a higher legal authority, and have worked through our state representative to request the Attorney General to provide guidance regarding this legal conflict. So, you can see on this date, I didn't know that they couldn't say anything. I was still waiting for the Attorney General to provide some type of a legal thing, because what I had heard is our opinion is, right? And I was concerned that that was a little bit too, not legal. However, we are seeking the opinion of a higher legal authority, and have worked through our state representative to request the Attorney General to provide guidance regarding this legal conflict. Our board and our community are concerned that we are being made to choose between two authorities, a local health department and the state of Michigan. It is surprising to us that a local decision would not automatically be subservient to the executive bill signed into law. We know we are meant to follow laws. You obey a law unless it's changed or a third branch of government, in this case, determines its enforceability. Every lawyer we have engaged says that the SB 82 is a law, and that the law directly addresses the conflict with your mask mandates. We noted that upon the passage of the law, multiple health departments across the state promptly dropped their mask mandates, just as we would have expected. It is the opinion of many of our constituents that quite possibly the Hope County Health Division is breaking the law by upholding a mandate. Hence, our adherence to the Hope County Health Department mandate caused us to break the law. I'm just trying to get her to understand the original concern we had is that one of you, maybe not only you in the room, but in one of our board meetings stated, how can you uphold your hope to the Constitution of the state if a law says this, and a mandate says this, and they seem to do this, right? That's been my whole thing, is to, on behalf of the board, seek some clarity to these things. I have not gotten response from this email. So, if you would scroll down, or is it the next one? Oh, that's my letter. So, go to the last one? We have... Sorry, yes, please, go back to that one. Thank you. So... On November 3rd or 4th, we're getting close to the date of this meeting, and I don't feel like I have a clear understanding of the wherefores, and especially the therefores. So, I reached out to John Riley, and I asked to talk to some legal kind of individuals that would maybe then have connected to the writing of SB 82, right? Because SB 82 had to be written, right? And it was probably written under some legal counsel, and so it got put into the bill. And I'm just saying, please help me talk to somebody, and tell me, if it's a law, do I follow it because it's a law that's talking to me, or is it the mandate? This is the response I got. Under Michigan law, local school boards must follow lawful orders of their local health officers. If the local health officer says kids have to wear masks, they must wear masks. Further, the budget language does not and can't prevent this. It can only take away funding, which is what it does. In turn, I ask the question, then have you withheld funding? I'll get to that in a second. I need you all to stop right here and understand, first of all, I hope appreciate the steps we've taken to try to get some clarity. But when I get close, I mean, I get why I may have gotten responses like, it's our opinion, it's unconstitutional. I get why I might get that response. But if we're anywhere close in this particular email train, if we're anywhere close to talking to the kinds of people who put SB 82 together, what they're saying is SB 82 is not about the kids. SB 82 is about our ability to punish a health department by not giving it funds. Us will have to await it until it's gone, but all it is, is directly connected to the health department. So, I want you, they're telling me it's not a law that I need to follow. They're telling me it's not a law I can or should follow. They're telling me I have to follow the mandate until the mandate changes because of all the risks that I've talked to you about for months. Losing governmental immunity, having your insurance coverages pulled away and saying, we won't protect you if you get sued. All of those kinds of things. I will tell you that on November 4th, I became sickened by the fact that I had to go home and realize that it wasn't about the kids. SB 82 was about Congress's ability to punitive punish a health department. So, when I asked, have they been punished? Have they had their funds affected? The answer was, at this point, no, and at this point, we don't know, because the executive branch does the spending. The only way we would ever find out is if we were to audit the executive branch who does the spending of the budget, and find out, and decide whether we wanted to do anything other than. So, they wouldn't even think about checking for six months or a year, maybe. So they wouldn't even think about checking for six months or a year maybe when they would want to audit. So not only, not only maybe because we don't have a full board, but what this does, in a sense, although I may not like it or some people may not like it, it answers my conflict. They themselves, potentially people who are close to writing SB 82, have said, you better follow the mandate while this is happening. And then now this. Just recently, I received a vote of the copy of the lawsuit, and some of you may have copies of this. This is a lawsuit from some people in Lake Orion or a person in Lake Orion, I'm really not sure. And it is a lawsuit against the open county health department and also, it looks like, Lake Orion Community Schools. I didn't know there was one. So it was really interesting to begin to dig into this. What I want you to realize and what I need you to know as I speak, what I'm going to read you is the attorney's words defending the open county health department. If you'll go to page, the next page, and scroll down to the paragraph that begins So let me do a backdrop. What this lawsuit is trying to do, and I don't know exactly the legal term, there might be someone in here, that when you go to the circuit court to get, I think it's called presumptive judgment, is you have to have an injury, there has to be something bad happening, you have to have a direct, it can't be hypothetical, there has to be someone being injured, there has to be a recipient of that injury, there has to be a party that you're saying is responsible for the injury. So here's what the lawsuit was. Basically, someone has said to the open county health department and to the Lake Orion School District, we're suing you because maybe my child's getting hurt. I haven't seen that side. And as you would expect, and by the way, this is going to be, if you look, if we scroll to the top again, this hearing date is tomorrow. Hearing date is November 10th, 2021 at 8:30 a.m. So these individuals are going to be at a hearing at the Circuit Court of Honorable Nancy J. Grant to begin to talk about this. What you're looking at is the documents that each side would send, kind of stating their case. This document is the open county health department's attorneys telling the court, basically, this is why we think you should drop this case. But in it, there are some things that lead me to question and to think. So down to second. They're saying why we cannot be sued, why we should not be sued. Secondly, there are no direct requirements imposed on schoolchildren by emergency order 2021-01 for control of pandemic, OCHD order, period. What does that say? Our order does not directly impose anything on a child. They go on to say, the only obligations in the open county health department or division order are placed on educational institutions. The OCHD order states that the educational institutions shall ensure. Two lines down, the educational institutions shall ensure that all persons, regardless of vaccine status, providing service to any persons in preschool through grade 12 properly and consistently wear a facial covering while inside any closed building or structure. You say to yourself, what distinction are they trying to make? What they're trying to say is we made the rule, we didn't tell you how to implement it. It is a very subtle distance thing that they seem to be creating. And I want to go on and read a couple more sentences. The language in the open county health division order makes clear that the county defendants are not directly mandating the plaintiff or any individual to do anything. Catch it? We're not responsible to tell anybody that they do it to do anything. So we're one step removed from anyone who could do injury or harm. Since there is no direct obligation imposed on plaintiffs by the county defendants, it stands to reason that she cannot be injured by them. Then that is a question, who could injure them? They answer that question in the next paragraph. Third, the potential injury plaintiff, why they think maybe that this thing should just be thrown away. But listen to the language. Third, the potential injury plaintiff raises is not traceable to the county defendants. The open county health division order does not include any penalty for schoolchildren who fail to wear a mask. Any consequence of plaintiff not wearing a mask in school would be within the exclusive provision of the school shooter. I agree to that section because now I am conflicted in a whole other way. One of the things, and this is, I need you to appreciate, I guess, I'm hoping, a couple things. You can shut down. One is that we as a board have worked hard trying to get down to the bottom of some of these issues. And I'm not at all pleased or happy with the vagueness of some of what we've dealt with. But when you have some of the individuals who may have been close to those people who actually created SB 82 telling you that that's not anything that you're supposed to be doing. It's not a law that governs you, it's a law that governs us. It's not about you and the kids and school, it's about us and the executive branch and the legislative branch and how we can do things or can't do things. But now, I would encourage all of you to watch this pace as it rolls out tomorrow because one of the questions that I've asked Mr. Thorne and others just to please be looking at is the topic of governmental immunity. I'm now confused and I just simply want clarification. I thought that I had governmental immunity because I obeyed something that is being mandated of me. Hence, if I follow that mandate, I'm protected from lawsuits, I have my insurance company supporting me and all sorts of things. Is this making sense? But if they tell me, they didn't tell me to do what I'm doing, they didn't tell me to have the rules we have about this, they didn't say anything about enforcement. Then what if I am enforcing and something happens and there's injury? And what happens if the open county health department says, I didn't tell you to do So actually, the conflict now has just gone to an if and area because the very reason that we have, we just want to protect the district, we want to do the right thing for our families, we want to do it legally and rightly. And this is a bit confusing. I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow at 8 o'clock. I am simply asking, and I will make closing remarks if you're still here, ask you for your patience. For our board, we've never taken a vote about who's pro mask or anti-mask, it doesn't matter. We're elected individuals told to obey the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Michigan. And I have been burrowing in to what does that mean? Because I think I know what it means. But when people start telling you, even people who may have been close to writing the law, that don't do what you're doing because you can't interpret it that way. Okay. And now that I'm facing a question, we are facing a question about governmental immunity, we're sitting tight. We're sitting tight and we're going to continue to work. But if you want to, if you want to, I can't stop you from concluding anything that you want to conclude about our motions. But we did not write a resolution and spend the time doing that and spent the last several weeks investigating because we never planned on doing anything. We had attorneys telling us it's law, but you got to follow the mandate. It's law, you got to follow the mandate. And now governmental people in our representative in our senate are telling us the same thing. And so for now, we have to comply as we now dig deeper into making sure that we still have governmental immunity. If injury were to occur, I'm uncomfortable and I would hope other board members are a bit uncomfortable with open county health department saying, hey, I made a mandate, but I didn't tell you how to implement it. I'm not responsible for how you implement it. Feels a little bit like I've been thrown under the bus. And we need to get clarification. We need to get clarification because it's right to get clarification. It's right. I ultimately know what truth is and we should be able to do this in the right way. So I would ultimately argue that there are two reasons why we're not voting on this today. And it's because right now, we're being told by everyone that the mandate is what we have to follow and that the law only is directed intergovernmental branch, it's not about them, it's not about us. So when I thought that, when you came and said, hey, SB 82 is a law, shouldn't we be following it? We pursued that to the end because it made sense. But right now, everyone that we've reached out to has said, you're right, it's the law, but it ain't about you and it's not about the kids and it's not about the schools. It's simply about our ability to negatively punish another branch. Does that make sense? Basically, the legislature said, executive branch, if you continue to do this, we have the right to cut your funding. But that will only happen sometime in the future when they decide to do that. It's not something that's instantaneous. I'm certain I'm going to have some comments in my final remarks. But I think I will end that part of the presentation. Anyone remember to have a clarification, anything I missed, anything that you think is wearing, who should we include? Give us this point that should be brought up. All right.
All right. So now I got to finish my agenda.
We're on number six, curriculum instruction. Mr. Weaver, district course catalog.
Okay, you may remember this back in August, so you had to approve it then. So one of our biggest audience of tonight, I need to admit, I made a mistake. So great, goodness. So anyways, when we put it forward, we didn't have the advisory class in there from the high school, we had added that class. The biggest change we've probably done in the industry, take quite some time with the high school part, in fact, we stepped on it and whatnot, we left it out. So we figured that out as we went through people count. And that's what we're here tonight is to have to reapprove the district course catalog with the advisory class.
All right, thank you, Ken. And Ken, by the way, with the rule, the Michigan school's rule about one mistake per year, you made it all the way there. So I mean, I think you did darn good. So don't feel bad about it at all.
That might be a new record.
All right, would someone like to put this motion on? Yes, sir.
Move to approve the district course catalog extension.
Thank you, Mr. Support. Very support discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Oxford High School ELA Book Club presentation.
Yep, we've got some ELA coaches and some ELA teachers that will be presenting today because Darnell will be doing closer to the talking, all of her good news. There's two ELA teachers as well, too. This is a new approach to teaching literature and novels at the high school, and they're going to inform you of what they're doing and what they're working on. They'll let them go.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ali Darnell. The movies tonight are Melissa Givens and Renee DeRiker. So I've been with the ELA department here at high school for about 20 years. I would say over the past six, we started to notice a big decline in students reading outside of class, even in the classroom. But we knew what we were competing against. I mean, to be quite honest, technology, we're good, but I mean, there's a lot of competition here. So I'm going to give you two articles that we kind of followed. One was kind of like challenging the cannons that we historically held in our classrooms and the other is just around the technology that we're competing on. So that just kind of gives you a background on some of the research that we did as we were looking into this. Sticking with, and I was thinking about what's the mission of Oxford Schools, something you might be a little bit familiar with, is something that we oftentimes glance at and think, are we really living into the mission that our district wants us to live into? And on the academic side, are we really helping students by preparing them for a global society? As an Ivy School district, we also have some aims and objectives of what's considered language and literature, which is that ELA department. And those pieces that really pop for us is that idea of developing our communication skills, listening skills, reading and speaking skills, as well as developing a lifelong interest in reading. We believe that if students can be lifelong readers, they will be lifelong learners. That said, we developed our book club mission. And so we started off, actually, I'll talk about that in the next slide, kind of jumping ahead. But so we kind of really knew that we wanted to build this, breed this interest back into reading and kind of like understand that unique human experience that we all have and to kind of develop a community of ground reading and thus the idea of book clubs was born. So our history began during the summer of 2019. As a team, as a 612 team, we run an album of books. And it really talks about a balance of literacy in the classrooms. It's not just reading the single textbook in the classroom, it's also giving students the option for choice that happens within the classroom. It's not just having the teacher lead the discussions, having students lead the discussion. Melissa Givens and I attended some OAA meetings, English department meetings, book clubs were our primary topic. We started digging in in the summer of 2020 to plan for pilots. We had a successful pilot last year. We also learned last year, gosh, it's really hard to find good textbooks, and I'll talk a little bit more on that later, too. And this year, we are starting to implement book clubs from 7th grade to 11th grade. I also want to say before Melissa stops off here, just this week, 180 Days by Deliver and Bill Art is considered like one of our. touching points in terms of where we should be as English language arts teachers. They came out just this week, it was published, with a new text, a follow-up to this piece that points to the four essentials in every single classroom, and book club is one of those four essentials. So that was really exciting to know that we are headed down a good path.
I'm Melissa Givens. I am teaching high school language arts. I've been in this for 22 years. I spent 14 years at the middle school. We did try some elements of a book club early on, even as at the middle school. It didn't kind of go out as we had planned. So Molly and I had started working on this initiative with the other county English teachers. I was really excited to jump on to work with her. So one of the challenges that we had to figure out was how is this actually going to look in Oxford? We have nine contemporary teachers who have to live into that NYPD curriculum. We have 11 and 12 who are guided by Common Core, but also we still want to stay true to some of that Ivy stuff as well. And we had about four years ago adopted Springboard. So what we decided to do was use kind of our Springboard textbook as our basic structure, look at each level where we could implement a book club unit. Not that the whole year was gonna be book club, but just one unit. As a person who was setting this up during COVID last year, I chose the first unit. So my 11th graders were like, what is this thing? Why are we doing this in COVID? I said, because why not try it now? So we did it in 11th grade last year with our American Dream unit. And the way I started modeling was using this Springboard textbook first. And then I incorporated a whole class read, which was the House on Mango Street, to kind of show skills that they would be needing to do independently within their book club units. So I created a structure for my kids where they would use the textbook, use our whole class novel to then lead them into being able to be independent in book clubs. The Springboard unit would teach the mini lessons, and then I would allow them to kind of have gain independence throughout our whole class read, and then have mini lessons in Springboards, and then do that independent piece with their book club novels. Ultimately, what we tried to do was use the summative assessment as this holistic approach. So for my juniors, they actually, they are currently writing the summative assessment right now, is they have to respond to the idea of what identifies an American today, or does that American dream exist today? And as part of their evidence, they are picking pieces from the Springboard textbook, from the House on Mango Street, which was our whole class read, and their book club now. So the assessment has been wide-ranging in terms of pieces. They've had nonfiction, they've had poetry, they've had short stories, they've had wonderful US history documents, like the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, because that's all part of the 11th grade language arts. So they have this wealth of knowledge of being able to come up with their synthesized essay of what it means to identify as an American today, or where that American dream sits. Does it exist today, and for whom does it exist? So that's kind of like the structure that we have created, at least in the 11th grade.
Hello, I'm Renee J. Reiner. I teach language arts here at the high school. And before I start talking about the types of mini lessons that we offer, I want to talk to you about our goals. So as a department, we focus on classroom speaking and listening. Goals with our skills, which are transferable to the workplace and college. And we also want to help with our students and encourage good and effective discussions. So the types of mini lessons that we do run are gonna be dependent on a particular grade level. Some of the lessons that we do are kind of two-part. On the beginning of the week, before the students actually read their assigned reading, which they work as a group to determine how many pages they're gonna read per night that week to be ready for discussion. We might focus on things like how to operate this tone, the addition, what a setting looks like, what's imagery and characterization. And then we will also, the day before they speak, like maybe mid-week, we're gonna start deepening their communication skills. We teach kids how to talk and how to, how to think well. And with that, we talk about the mechanics of talking, listening, taking turns, staying on topic. How do we extend talk in a classroom? We offer some stems for them to use as second starters. And how do we incorporate open-ended questions when they utilize discussions? And then we focus on deepening talk. So we get to the point on what are the topics worth studying and what are appropriate ways to debate? So that's kind of the thing that we focus on with the mini lessons, which also will tie into why do book clubs make a difference? And as language arts teachers, I mean, this is very exciting for us. And I think one of the things I want to talk to you before and answer why do book clubs make a difference is the exposure allows for the following. And three of the key words or phrases that stuck out to me are positive effects, allow for experience, and also choice with students. So we've done studies, or we've read studies with the University of Arkansas, the kid exposure of book clubs is a positive effect on that, whoever resistant to reading. They book clubs emphasize reading as an experience rather than an academic task, which, believe me, is pretty huge and pretty valid for students, especially who often wants to come and read and participate. And the bottom line is choice. It allows them to have kind of say in what they're allowed to read as opposed to, here's what we're going to be doing. And then, you know, long-term effects involve literacy and development of them as readers. So for us, I think it's an amazing opportunity to get our students to offer deeper discussions, follow up, and use transferable skills.
Okay. So at the end of my pilot last year, I had my students give me some reflection. And I told them it's like no rate attached. I'm just truly curious as to how you thought this experience was because it was definitely new. As you can see, students enjoyed it. They enjoyed the book. I gained new knowledge of the American dream and how different cultures view America and being an American. I'm happy we did book clubs. I really liked it. We were given time to research book choices before we picked one. What is interesting is that really the negative comments that I received was basically because of all the COVID restrictions. So last year, my classroom, which in 22 years, my classroom is never a straight row. It had to be last year. So my students were in straight rows. They were six feet apart. And I said, okay, do book clubs. Well, how do you sit and talk to people in a book club setting when there's that restriction and you have masks and you can't get up and move or anything? So that was really truly the biggest complaint the students had, was that they really couldn't gather together. And so, but they understood, we're in COVID, you can't do anything like that. And so this year, with the restrictions loosened up a little bit, they are back into their pods where they are pre-aid spaced out, wearing masks. And so for the last five or six weeks, they have been sitting in their groups of four or five, working, discussing, writing, sometimes reading together, sometimes just bouncing ideas back and forth from one to one another. So it's been really exciting for me to see just the difference between doing a book club where you really can't turn and talk within, you know, a limited space, to the excitement of they can actually sit together in this year, which is nice.
So I mentioned earlier that one of the difficulties we had was in selecting tasks. And so we kind of went back over the past. We were reading more and more texts, and we're like, gosh, we've kind of always had warnings and tests that existed, right? We have this American staple that most of us write during our high school experience. And so there's always going to be content that we may not be comfortable with. But we also know that that is kind of sometimes part of life, too. So I guess my point is there is relevance in all of these pieces that we read. There is a reason why this was a staple for so long. And while it may not speak to every single student today, we are still giving them the opportunity to have, this is actually part of our 11th grade book club as well. So it is one of the many texts that we have within that option. Oh, go ahead. Okay, so when a book club gets rolled out, the students are presented with a PowerPoint presentation, as I believe it's given said. They go over their text options. They might do a book tasting or read a page or two, so they see if they're reading level two, because we're also interested in reading level being appropriate for a kid. So they're kind of given that time to look it over. And then students are given an option to fill out like a self-selected first or second choice they're given. We can't always give a first choice. We really work hard to give a first or second choi- choice. During that time, too, parents are sent a letter home and with kind of some information. And then text options are also posted on Haiku. In that parent letter, there's some details. It explains the rationale behind book club. This is something that's new for us, and so also would be new for our parents. It asks parents to discuss those book club options with their child. It reminds parents that there's not always the right, that what might not be right for your kid could be right for somebody else's. It gives details about each novel, and then it allows parents the option. You're not comfortable having your child select a certain task, please email the teacher to exclude that from that piece. So with that, I do have a sample. I was lucky enough, the other name of this works. I was lucky enough to pop over to Ms. Givens' room. It's the end, she said they're wrapping up book club, and grab up one group who was discussing, and kind of, even though I have some technology difficulties, was able to grab a few pieces out of it. So I'm just gonna share this quick, three-minute clip right here. I'm gonna cut it here. It goes on at the end. I asked them how they enjoy book clubs. And they were so thankful for the opportunity. Where a couple of them had to say was also reinforced by one of our special education teachers, who said, sometimes I didn't pick up on something, but someone else did. And so I understood that novel a little bit better and what was being said and what the theme was, because somebody else was giving me information. And you may not see it here, but as a teacher, I see boys who came prepared to a reading group. They knew what they were talking about. They were referring to previous chapters as it grew. And they were using sentence stunts. I also agree with that, but I also saw. So you see there, that air, that way in which they're communicating with each other is changing. So for me, that's very exciting to see. I think that's it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hold on, let's see if there's a, we won't have to jump over now. Anybody have any comments, questions, chat?
Just wanted to talk about the presentation tonight and sharing sharing your passion for the written word with the kids. I love it. If I would have had a teacher when I was in high school, it showed me how great reading is for me. I probably would have started reading a lot sooner. Now I've always got a book in my hand. I've never had an opportunity to be a part of a book club. But what I, in my mind, what I equate that to is, I don't know, was it 20 years ago when you're already there talking? And what I was able to sit with people at work and talk about the story as we're going through it, and it helps, like you said, it helps submit some of the ideas that I had, but also bring in some of the, the ideas that maybe I'm missing. You know, if somebody else was in the spot, right? So, you know, it wasn't so years later that we knew that it's me. Don't need to catch that. But, but I appreciate it. Thank you for bringing that. I think I would have had a great guest if I had, if everybody was there.
Anyone else? Mary?
Thank you. Well, I might go to the library now. Thank you. Why not the library? I love reading. And it's great to see Ms. Givens interacting with each other this way. It's, it's fantastic to see that they're learning stuff and they already know it. You know, that's the best way. I really, I'm awfully impressed by sending the integration home to parents and giving the parents an opportunity to be a part of their kid's life. My kids are out of high school now, but when they were in high school, it'd be so much fun. You know, it was always so much to do that, I don't know, which you were, I don't know. You know, it was a whole bunch of I don't knows. But if I would have had some prompts, you know, like that, for me, they just didn't share with me. But if I would have had some more prompts, you know, it's great to be able to have those discussions about things. And I read the Great Gatsby in high school, and I never understood it. I just did not understand it. But I have been in book clubs. It is great. It's like enjoyable group work. You know, ooh, very proud of that. But this is enjoyable when everybody actually is contributing and you realize that you can learn things from each other. And it's great to see you all working as a team, you know, learning from each other and wanting to do better, you know, and seeing where we need it. These are the things that make us, we're really special. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Great presentation. Anita?
I thought I might, that'd be okay, just to kind of speed to it from here, to the super quick.
Sure.
So in September, I was here, this part of K 48 of Section 98, we have to present educational goals for our students at Harvard, on the end of the morning. And so the only goal I was not able to present to was the meaningful for book club with virtual tech, because they had a change in the assessment. And if we recall, we changed the assessment to make more informed decisions of those students. And so they administered the plan to see now, which is an assessment that actually you sit and read with every student, and so that there is more information to gauge. And I'll read their goal. Starting to get that aid or anything, I mean, like for your classes, sorry. So the mid-year goal is all devocations have been heard, and the first grade students will improve by at least two levels as measured by the FTE. And all second through fifth grade students will improve by at least one level. The reason there's a difference in level expectations is because when students are younger, there are many more levels for them to attain. So it goes like A, B, C, D, E, F, all the way through C. But as you get older, those levels will be slowed down. And then by the end of the year, all students will have improved by two levels total. And again, I'm sorry, I know it's in your fourth packet, but I don't have that in here. But that's all I have for you. In February, March, we'll do that to present the year's progress for the year.
Anita, thank you for that update. Anybody have a comment, question? Thank you. Mr. Sam Larnar. For everyone here, we're on number seven, finance and operations.
Good evening. So two items on the agenda this evening. Obviously, the first one is the proposed tractor for our maintenance departments. So I was wondering if you'd be able to, it's a grant's approval to purchase this year.
All right, let's put the motion on. If anybody has any questions, just stay there for any comments, questions. Would someone like to put the motion on the floor? Eric?
Move to approve the purchase of a facility tractor from, from the Brothers of the Little Mount, a little amount of $1,670, $3,799.
Thank you, sir. And is there support? Corey, support? Discussion. Maybe just briefly, so everyone knows the use of this.
Sure. Well, first of all, it's a sourceful contract, so it's a consortium purchase, so it's a great price. The use in the district is mainly going to be The use in the district is mainly going to be for, obviously, our maintenance area, for our salt in brewing winter time. So at the maintenance garage on the Combiec Road, our home office and our, our maintenance staff, we have a salt for the entire district for, for our winter months, obviously. And so right now, we've been borrowing the last several years from Oxford Township, their loader, in order to, obviously, dig the, uh, the salt off the truck and then distribute it to other trucks so that we can go around the district and do the proper amount of salting. That's one use. Other uses across the district are for assisted grass cutting, especially with our new property, as well as at high school, middle school, and all the elementarys, it'll just assist with that. And also moving equipment here at the high school, specifically for athletics, heavy equipment. It's a front holder as well, so you're able to carry things very easily with it. So that's really where our intended uses would be for the tractor.
All right, thank you, Sam. Any comments or questions for Sam? Yes?
Um, here's Mr. Vernon. Thank you. Mr. Vernon, where the, where's the funding coming from? This is something that we had to budget. Where is this?
Great question. So it's coming from a general fund, and it was budgeted actually this year. From the general.
Thank you, Mary. Anything else?
Uh, Corey, do you have a way of all of this thing?
So as of right now, we would have to borrow a actual trailer from Oxford Township. They're very willing to allow us to do that, and we can continue to do that. To purchase a new trailer for this would be approximately six thousand dollars additionally.
Is that something we'll be looking at in the future?
I think so. I think eventually we would like to do that. But again, Oxford Township's fantastic, and so they're always agreeable when we need to borrow something such as a trailer.
Corey, any question? Anybody else? Uh, yes, Chad.
Sam, so if you had the, the order, I'm calling you. So you mentioned that there's possibly a new door, perhaps, only?
Yes. There's an attachment as well.
Is that? I didn't see that. So are we gonna have to, I mean, where, there's, there's, will there be additional options that we're gonna have to purchase, like a cutting deck?
Sure. So down the road, yes, if we so chose to use it for a specific, you know, reason, and we don't have that attachment, we would have to purchase those additional attachments. But as of right now, we're getting several attachments that go along with it already as part of the price. So it would just depend on how we utilize that going forward. But just as a reminder, we recently purchased two zero-turner bowlers as well, and so those have been phenomenal, especially with the purchase of the property over the summer, thirty-two acres. And so not just that property, but this would assist us, again, district-wide, you know, in our grass cutting program.
So grass cutting is one of the?
It's one of the, it's one of the situations.
One of the, one of the three that we're getting the, you said there were three?
There, there's several attachments. One of them is the, the actual grass cutting, there's a two-level, uh, deck attachment bucket, so there doesn't appear to be within this quote, an actual grass cutting attachment in this work. But that would be something we would go forward with if we chose to use it that way.
So like trailer, that's something that we could add?
Right, okay, right.
All right. Any else? Yes, Mary?
I'll continue on. The, uh, what are, what are we looking at for annual operational maintenance costs? What are we looking at the life of the equipment? I'm just wondering if we can borrow equipment that we need, so buy the equipment?
Well, we-
If we don't, if we don't have a, if we don't have a, like, a full-time use for it, or is it supposed to be so that we can throw into the management or anything?
Oh, that's a great question. So we would have an immediate use for it, it would be a fairly intensive use going into the winter months. You know, again, if we were to, you know, purchase the additional attachment for moment, we would be utilizing that for a moment during, obviously, the spring and summer months and into the fall. And it's also for cleaning as well. And again, we would utilize it here at the high school, you know, for moving heavier equipment, as an example, those school potentially as well, for that athletic equipment, as I mentioned earlier, athletics, you know, on the field, goalposts, things that are really heavy and really difficult to move from field to field, as an example. But again, to answer, to answer your question, could we continue to utilize and borrow? Well, of course we could. We could do that. But we did, I did place this in the budget as a budget line, I was going for the general fund this year, knowing that there may be situations going forward where Oxford Township would basically not have something available for us that would be convenient for us. So hence the reason to purchase one ourselves. But again, to answer your question, yes, we could continue to borrow.
I'm not, we're gonna get for a life span, annual cost.
So annual cost of maintenance around about a thousand dollars. I mean, we're, we're looking to do this in-house. We got the staff to change the oil and all of the fluids, you know, that's something that's fairly, you know, measuring easy to do ourselves. And again, it would just be the simple maintenance and upkeep, you know, keeping up the maintenance schedule for that, just like a car. Useful life of something like this is quite long, you know, it's, it's a thirty-to-four year lifespan, if not longer. So the appreciable life on something like this from accounting perspective is in that thirty-five to forty-year range.
I think, I think that's, 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 that's.
I believe this is, yeah, you know, frankly, I'm not-
It says the four-year.
Yeah. And you can get the gas as well, but again, diesel is a little more expensive, so that's why, you know, the, the annual maintenance and operation costs are a little bit higher. Diesel's about ten percent higher than gas right now, so in terms of the cost of all, so. That's my question, in general.
Board members, anything else? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, just, just saying, please have a conversation with things like, you know, trailer.
Again, we would still be utilizing Oxford Township if they have the availability of their trailer or trailers. They have several, my, my parks and lots specifically. And so we could purchase one, again, they're, again, approximately six thousand dollars. But we could also continue to utilize their trailer if you go. And again, it depends on the amount of transportation, whether it's your building or your business.
And the, the maintenance trucks we have are plenty powerful.
Absolutely, yeah, they're all HDs for the most part.
I'm curious why there's a line ahead of that. Why you and Ash are eating on this? It's nothing to do with you.
I'm not a smoker.
Board members, anything else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? One more request for purchasing a washing system?
That's right.
So that, or you might put it on the floor?
Oh.
We'll put it on, we'll put it on the floor. Would someone like to put this motion on the floor? Mary?
Move to approve the purchase of the Chesley Wash System from InterClean Equipment for a total amount of seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and seventy cents as presented.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, so Corey? Corey, support? All right, discussion?
So this is for, actually, part of the bond program and sinking farm program. This was originally put into our plan. This is obviously for our newly revised transportation building in sight. This is currently prepped to go into, if approved, the final day within the transportation building. And so it's an automatic, automated bus wash. We can process approximately one bus every ten minutes. It's a high-pressure washing, washing system, obviously high water. And so that's what we're looking to do. This is actually also a consortium purchase for the equipment. And so again, we're, several quotes, speaking with our IDS, our architectural firm, throughout the last several months, looking at different options. Some of those options were a lot more expensive than this particular option. We feel that this option is more economical and honestly, the best value for the district. You know, we have approximately two and a half million, a few million dollars worth of relatively new buses, including two electric buses. And the majority, very thankful for that, obviously, but as everyone's very aware that the majority of our votes here in Oxford, not just township, in going into the, if you're a county or a rural vote, so it's imperative that we keep these investments in tip-top shape. And so we feel that this is a, is a good investment.
Would you say again, please, where the funds are coming? Did I hear you say fund and sinking?
Yes, so these will be coming from the bond or the sinking fund, you know, either one.
Is, is the seventy-three thousand dollars roughly, is that all-inclusive? What I mean is drainage, pumping, you know, are there additional costs that are going to be surrounding?
There, there are. There, there's two costs. One is for plumbing and one is for electric, and those are estimated approximately in totality, six thousand additional criminal dollars above the, yeah, this amount.
Thank you. Anything else from board members? Mary?
Thank you. All of this, you said, was part of the original bond?
Yes.
So it's not new. Uh, do we, are we doing, do we have any kind of wash there now? Do we have anything over there now?
We actually have a portable power washer.
Wow.
We will maintain a portable power washer as well. But I guess that's, that's what we currently use.
That's a lot of manual labor.
It is. This would save a pretty little time, making it more efficient.
Yeah. And a lot easier in the winter time, too, I think.
Absolutely.
Yes, I, I did look into all the specifics. I'm guessing that this is going to be also water, because water's really expensive. We buy, you know, we have to pay for all that, so.
It is, it is an efficient system, and it is one of the newer models, obviously. So I don't know how many gallons per minute, per se.
I just want to be sure that we did look into that, because I know that is a really large expense. And I'm, I'm also, I just want to be aware of whatever drainage and whatnot needs to be done with the other issues we had over the summer with things happening with parking lot and everything turning out fine, which is great, but also concerned about, you know, what, I don't know, some of that has to be set, what kind of drainage has to be done, or like the ground is light down there?
Actually, we already prepped for, 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 knowing that there was going to be something occurring, we actually had some work done over the summer in this area to where the plumbing underneath the ground, there's a grinder pump as well for all the sediment debris. That has all been taken care of for the most part. And so really, this is the cost of the equipment, as well as the installation and the proper alignment for the buses.
Okay, thank you.
Chad?
Thank you.
Sam?
Thank you.
Okay. I just go back to the basics, just around cleaning buses, right? I would imagine if, I would imagine if the battery pack and cleaning buses ever remained visible, right, making it safer transport? I understand how often or, I mean, how often are people doing washing the buses? I mean, I would assume that going when you said, you know, the winter months are going to be more frequent. But how often, I mean, I guess we might, where I go in with this is, I just am trying to understand how long it would take for something like this to pay itself off.
Sure, sure. Well, again, I would have to say that it really depends on the weather and the frequency of, of the bus washes, but I don't know. How often is it once we, with each bus, or is it more related to the weather, obviously?
It's not so much weather-related, it's, it's, right? Why does that, you know, it's a hard day?
I, I, I don't know.
Well, and, and our debate, it's also certainly, it's, it's, I, it's, the winter months, you can't use during the winter month, and the day is often, it's, it's small, so it's clearly compact, and just trying to get the bus and get yourself into that bay and wash it. I think it's right, it's, 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 it's the time, it's, it's the time, my staff is not young anymore, and it takes a lot of work to, to, to manually wash it, to actually do the trouble, to take that piece out of the floor, and a lot of people.
Can you, so this would go?
Yes.
The other, I would think too, that, that is very important with protecting this fleet and extending the life of the fleet itself, is the underwriting spray. We've never had an underwriting wash, so now we're trying to use a, a power washer underneath, you're lucky you didn't, but now we're gonna be able to keep that out, because it would keep some of the left side, but keep that in time. The fluoride comes, this accumulates, and a lot of our issues in the past, with our old, old trucks.
Thank you.
Chad, I will add also that, you mean, in Leonard, these spray, calcium chloride, all year long, is to keep the dust down. I'm a dear road veteran, as those buses are driving them, so even in the summertime, they're covered in, the, the, up on the buses is still covered in calcium chloride, so they're being salted all year long.
Corey?
And I'm sure you all have these figures, how many wheel bearings and hubs and ball joints and things like that are we replacing now on some of those vehicles, because we couldn't keep these things moving, and we're going to, we're going to hang that, you know?
A lot of our issues, I think, in the past, were brought to more self-managed, you know, I mean, sort of issues with those, um, but, um, just keeping the, the frames themselves from, like, I've heard, the cross runners, that are, a lot struggling around, because you're all.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Pass?
Good evening. I have a couple of motions this evening to the board, information on both these motions were in your packet this evening. First motion is for the 403B annuity payment.
All right. As we get to Sam, let's put the motion on, if we have any questions we're asking, and now we'll just put a vote. So Chad?
Move to approve the payment of one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-two cents for Tim Thron's 403B contribution as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there support? Eric, support? All right, is there any discussion? Mary?
Thank you. I'm really happy to do it. Mr. Pass, can you just explain briefly the exciting world of contributions to 403Bs? It is where we came to this, just so folks in our community has a little background on how this kind of works, or looks like.
Sure, sure. So during the, during the 2018-19 school year, we discovered that the 403B payments that were administered to administrators and Mr. Throne were not being reported to the retirement system. And according to ORS rules, those were supposed to be reported. So, so when that was discovered at that time, we used guidance of the Fair Labor Standards Act to go back and correct that deficiency for, for two years. And so that's what we did, because it was a district error that was made at that time, we collected the employee portion of that contribution for the current fiscal year. However, the district, district covered that expense in the previous year. And so with Mr. Throne retiring, now it was, it was discovered that we needed to go back and correct that. We corrected it for every employee at the time who had received that 403B contribution. Tim was the only exception, the only employee that had that in the prior two years. And so we are recommending that the board approve that payment consistent with what we did with other employees in, in covering the employee portion of that contribution.
Thank you.
Question, Mary? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Good. The second motion is the approval of the updated 2021 through 2023 superintendent contract.
Thank you. Let's put this motion on for, uh, Mary?
Move to approve the updated 2021, 2023 superintendent contract for Tim Thron as presented upon the advice of the attorneys.
Support? Chad, support? Discussion? Let me first say that we recently received a highlighted version, and that its language, not dollars and cents, is just putting things in the right categories and describing them properly, the adjustments that the attorneys made, because we've already seen this track a couple times. So other than that, do you have any questions or comments of Mr. Pass? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have finished seven and eight. We're at nine, Student Services. Jill?
I have nothing this evening, but I did want to let you know to expect next meeting, we have to annually, I'm sorry, review our emergency operations plan. And so we are really lucky in our community that we have full buy-in from our fire, police, and local, you know, folks are keeping us safe, and our perfectly staffers. We typically, excuse me, meet with them, pull over it, make sure that we're doing everything we need to be doing, that looks at our evacuation drills, anything to do with, you know, active shooter or anything like that. So I'll be bringing that to you next month. I just wanted to give you a heads up, we'll be reviewing that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to move to unscheduled audience participation. Do you have some cards for me? So what we're going to do is, we've done in the last few meetings, is we're going to take a five-minute break so that I can get a chance to see those, everyone can stretch their legs, and then we'll talk about some instructions for that process and get to those comments. Eight, ten, and we're going to take a recess for the required time to do that. Anyone else on the board that we're here to listen? And I will try my best to restate to you what I believe that you said, I want to make sure that I understood, and then we as a board, don't be surprised if we're not responding to each one of you, this is your chance to talk to us. The last meeting, an instruction that I provided that I thought worked pretty well is that, especially on a topic like the mask thing, where we've had discussion and we're going to have some more today, if someone has said something that you've already said or that you wanted to say, bring us something new, another thought, give us something that we can ponder, but to potentially alleviate a three-hour meeting, or a six-hour meeting like we had the first time. The objective of this is for you to share something that we may not know, something that you want us to consider. And so if someone already has said your thought, then maybe you don't have to say it. If somebody has, was incomplete, add to it. You know what I'm saying? Let, make it, make it so that we're hearing one message that is clearly being articulated, not the same thing 25 times in a row, right? So I know you're passionate about the subject, but we've been working hard and we'll continue to work hard with you. And so Chad is going to be our timekeeper. At four minutes, he simply gonna raise his hand and then put it down again. That four minutes is to tell you that you got one minute to wrap up and be done. And then at five minutes, he's gonna raise his hand and we're done. And then we go to the next individual. Okay? So when you see that handle up first time, knowing in your head, you gotta wrap up in a minute, okay? Because at five, we're gonna cut it off, and then we're gonna go to the next individual. All right? And last thing, you've done a great job of keeping the conversation civil. Would ask that you continue to do it. You've done a great job, and proud of you and the way that you've handled those situations, and let's continue to do it the same way. All right. The first person that I'd like to invite up wants to talk about the superintendent search, and so George, would you come up, please?
Well, thank you for this opportunity. Now, I wanted to thank you for allowing the parents the opportunity last night to speak with the head of the search team that will be assisting you. We had a robust conversation, one that was in-depth about a variety of issues, very interesting, and I think you'll be very interested in the results of that. One of the many issues that came up was diversity and the lack of diversity in this district. And I have a question, and I don't expect you to answer it, because I understand this is not a dialogue, but I'd like you to consider is this, what will you be doing as a board in your search to ensure that people of color and those underrepresented communities, assuming they meet the criteria, are highly qualified, are encouraged to apply to this position? And not just fulfill a legal requirement, but to actively seek out and encourage people of color and those of underrepresented communities?
Thank you. As, while we stay here for a second, first of all, I'm glad you had a great experience. We, in the time span in which we are trying to do this, to have one day and meet all of the, you know, the groups, was, was, to me, a time constraint, but I'm glad they went well. And I've heard that there's been some great discussions at all levels of those people that have never been, so that's awesome. Your particular issue that you would like us to be thinking about is the diversity. And what's in our search process is ensuring that we would make sure that anyone who is of color, anyone who would be of a different people group or whatnot, that we're not getting them lost in the process, but they're actually having an open door to being represented as potential candidates for the superintendent position.
That's correct. And I see that as, I see that having a search firm, what I learned from the last meeting about how this is done, I think offers distinct advantage and opportunity because of his connection, his ability for outreach.
Thank you. You are right, because the search firm, MLI, also can act as an agent of searching, right? So thank you for that, and thank you for, thank you for your involvement in that. Thank you very much. Angela, you would like to speak about Aaron's Law?
Have you seen the video that will be shown to the children of all different grades on Aaron's Law?
Let me ask a question. I don't know. We've seen videos and we've gotten presentations for how it's rolled out in each of the...
No, I'm talking individually. Have you seen what a second grader is gonna watch on Thursday?
No, I don't think we've, we've seen that video.
Okay, you should. And also, the person who is going to be teaching it, what kind of education did they have I went there and I spent 90 minutes just on second grade, didn't even make it to the fourth grade section, which is gonna be shown to my child on Thursday. Our school was notified by just a little blip in the bottom corner of the email that comes out every Friday that said, if you don't want your child to view this, you need to print out this piece of paper, sign it, and send it back. For something of this importance, you don't put it in an email like that. So we're clear, Lake, and that's how it was presented. DA had it printed and sent home in their folders. At least that's going to make you more apt to be like, whoa, wait, let me look at this. What is this? I just talked to two parents here tonight that don't even know what Aaron's Law is, and your kid's gonna see it on Thursday.
Yeah, I guess can you help me?
Aaron's Law is about sexual abuse. Your second grader's gonna watch a video.
Your conversation is with me, not them. Please. It's one of the reports, is that it's not a dialogue?
I heard you.
Okay. Is there something about the video that you would want me to know about as I'm watching?
Just watch it.
Okay.
You'll know.
Good. And specifically, it is the...
The one the second graders will see, it's the only one I've seen.
Got it. All right. So certainly you have a concern about the, how it's being rolled out, and that you have specifically some concerns about that video, the second grade video, and that you're a little bit confused and not, why did one school send it out in one way and another school send it out in a different way? Why wasn't it done uniformly? And also, one of the things you mentioned was, those who might be teaching it, what was their training?
Correct.
What's kind of trade, so, so I have it all?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I agree with that as well on Aaron's Law, same comments. My six-year-old went out to give us seminars, and three of them I think we've got over the next three, four months as well. So first, thanks again for providing the platform. Thanks, y'all, for listening. Marine Corps birthday tomorrow, 246 years, followed by Veterans Day. If you want to join book club, that is the books you want to read is about the U.S. Marine Corps. During Quantico, I recommend everybody go to the Marine Corps Museum. You will quickly learn about the American dream of freedom. So congrats to those that served in the Marine Corps or veterans. Over the past two months, Oakland County, supported by the Oxford School District, has forced their children to wear masks for nearly seven hours a day. Within 24 hours of the FDA's subcommittee's approval, recommendation of the five-to-11-year-old child injection, Oakland County, who refused to talk to you guys all summer, released to the public a future strategy to roll out mobile injection sites immediately upon receiving child dosages. Within 24 hours of the FDA's official approval, Oakland County released a mobile injection strategy and received tens of thousands of doses in less than 24 hours. As injected children increase their COVID fatality rate from 0% to 0%, while assuming unknown short- and long-term risks, one should expect a mandate similar to the nationwide mandates that now includes all personnel in working facilities with over 100 people. This is a new executive order passed out from the federal government in the last 30 days. As the frontline workers such as police, firemen, doctors, nurses, military, et cetera, were all targeted in the previous 30 days. You think it's not common, it's common. The local side's gonna be, I mean, to throw it more into this board's face, if they don't even talk to you, they're gonna stick an injection site right in front of Lakeville School, in the middle school. They don't talk to you all summer, but on November 19th, they're gonna be targeted right out, they're gonna be sitting there, right out front, with their ratchet, providing injections to five groups. I've also become aware of a feelings room in Oxford High School. It's called, it's a creepy name. I'm also aware of a feelings or cry room in Oxford High School. About three or four Oxford Wildcat Bullons ago, they had a full page on it. It's got a fancy psychological word that I'm not aware of, but in essence, a feelings room, so they can identify their feelings and avoid potential discipline. I've heard, I've heard folks talk in the weekly, in the leader, Oxford leader, response to CRT. I heard, let's go, we're talking equity over equality, environmental. And I was recently asked if my six-year-old would like to become a member of the school's sponsored environmental green team. At the same time, I was answering surveys requesting school's feedback with respect to the new superintendent, and what seems to be the most important thing is what to do with the fallout of the COVID Recovery Act funds destined for this district. Masks, injections, Aaron Laws, cry rooms, green teams, and if not careful, a future hate-based CRT-based curriculum. It sounds more like Berkeley, California than Oxford, Michigan. I ask this board to take a stand, vote, and take back control of our children's education and associated learning environment. Anyways, thanks. I sincerely appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight, so thank you very much.
Darren, thank you, and also, as I think I have said previously, thank you for your service for our country. What I think in this time speaking to us, you're wanting us to see that there are some inevitable dominos that seem to be stacking up. And by your use of 30 days, this was it, then 30 more days, then this is it, there's more dominos to come. And, and, and so you're wanting us to wake up with the attention to the fact that the, you've mentioned in previous conversations, governmental overreach, the idea that they're deciding for us rather than us deciding for us, is, is beginning to have a chokehold on our school district. Talking about eventually one of those dominos will be CRT, other dominos are enforced vaccinations. Right? Am I just of what you're saying?
Pretty much. I, yeah, it, folks don't see it, you know? Look, what I've done the last three, three, four meetings, is I've just said, this is what's happened in the last 30 days. And every weekend, I go, I said, here's what's happened in the last 30 days. Today, what happened in the last 30 days? I remember, you know, a couple, four weeks ago, I had a couple folks up here, they came up about injections. And aside, I, it's nothing personal, it, I, you know, it's sort of, because masks were, masks were the little thing. But look where we're at, 90 days, 90 days later, you know, it, so I'm very worried. As a outsider that has moved into Oxford three years ago, I hope you remain Wildcats, but I'm not. I am doubtful that, and I thought we could get her through, high school was our goal. I hope now I can get her through the DA's, you know, through third grade. Now I hope, honestly, I hope I can get her to Christmas. That's, but that's how worried, that is how worried I am. And not based on the caliber of teachers, principal, et cetera, it's different about that. But I am really, really worried, and I hope I didn't make the biggest mistake of my life in moving to this county, say the city, but this county. I have never believed what happened, what would occur here in the last year.
Darren, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again. As a neighboring community member and advocate for parental rights, I felt it was important for me to speak up in support of a vote. I support a vote for several reasons. First and foremost, that you would give to your word... that you would keep to your word. Secondly, that you would keep from your community losing trust in you. And thirdly, because you have an opportunity to stand apart and in some small way allow for the concept of all political power is inherent in the people to mean something again. Your community members have made a clearance on several occasions despite baseless rhetoric that they're selfish and want people to get sick, but that they're just asking for a choice on behalf of their children. There was a time in our country when just saying no was enough. Autonomy and freedom of speech and civility meant something. There was a time when you could dialogue with your neighbor, and if you disagreed, it didn't mean you'd have to cut ties in the relationship or begin to build an echo chamber of only those who agreed with you. There was a time when rights mattered. That time was a long 15 days to flatten the curve ago. It was in that moment, my ability to think for myself was considered selfish. I could no longer weigh a risk on my own. I could no longer determine the level of safety I could provide for my own family. Suddenly, what I had done every single day of my adult life was being decided for me. We all have endured, each of us in this room, a different story since that time. If any of you are personally interested in my story through COVID and my cancer treatment, I would gladly share that with you individually. Lastly, there was a time when elected officials were willing to ensure that our rights were protected. As a result, I had to seek answers by the legal, what you saw today, as a private citizen. I planned to read those portions. I didn't realize that they would have already been shared, so I'm gonna move past that. And I'll ask, will you point fingers in circles back at the Oakland County Health Department when they so very clearly are okay pointing the finger at you? That could change if you decided to vote. It could change the moment you decide to return dignity to the parents in your district. And will you keep your word? I certainly hope so. Thank you.
The description... What you're describing, the process, you made the statement, I think very similar to the previous gentleman, that 15 days to flatten the curve to, I can't even decide for my own life, my own self, my own family, that in less than two years, it's all changed. It's all changed.
Yes, James, and that's not to be dismissive of those we've lost or by any means those that have been sick.
And so, because of that, because of that, you're here to remind us again, like you did last time, that a vote by elected officials like the school board would draw a line in the sand with the Oakland County Health Division, and that process of removing those rights from you and other parents, and for them deciding that they have the rights because they know better. And ultimately, your saying to us to keep your word from what you made in the red motion.
Correct. And even if tomorrow morning, you know, we lose in court, and even if you all voted no, I think that I can, I want to recognize that there has to be some sort of oversight and process, and I wouldn't be as, I don't want to say not passionate, but I would have, I do have a clear understanding of why people see things the way that you. But I guess it would return, yes, to somewhat, you know, big government to a more small local level, and I think that that's something more tangible, and it's how things used to be. So, thank you.
Shirley?
My name is Shirley Tomzak. I've been a part of the Oxford School community for over 50 years. I taught and was a counselor at the high school and the middle school for 30 years, and my heart is with this community. My three daughters graduated from Oxford High School. Two of my granddaughters now attend Oxford Schools. I've been coming to these meetings because I have been horrified by the news media coverage of school board meetings where people have been disruptive and certainly not civil. And I want to compliment you, Mr. Donnelly, for the way you have handled these meetings. I think you've done a tremendous job at reminding people to be civil. I have, I have a feeling about what it means to be a Wildcat, and I think it means to be a good citizen. And I know that I stop stop signs, I wear my seatbelt, and I don't threaten people or spew hate. And I think a Wildcat is taught to take care of its community. And I think that's what we need to have in mind. I think you've handled this conundrum in a really thoughtful and thorough way, and I commend you for that. And I hope the audience and the community has the patience to stay with you until you come to a conclusion that is right for all of us Wildcats. I also just want to say, I was an English teacher here at the high school, and I can't tell you how impressed I was by seeing 10th through 11th grade boys sitting around intelligently discussing a book. Like, I think that is just amazing, and I hope that you will let those ELA teachers know that. I think my legacy is being lived out. So, thank you very much.
Shirley, first, thank you for your 30 years of service in the district.
Not agreeing, but see, it's still hard to do.
I think the Marine would probably argue that he got to deal with high school students that long, you probably deserve, you know, the honor. But more importantly, that there's three generations of your family, with you being here and your children and now your grandchildren. Thank you for your definition of a Wildcat. Yes, is sometimes more important than getting to the end, doing something right, and getting somewhere that's right.
And doing it in a civil manner.
Yes, yes. And so, it's going to take patient endurance to get through some of this, and I'm glad that book club is a way in which you can go home, put your hand in the pillow tonight, and know that your legacy is here.
Well, then I'll ask my granddaughter if she will once.
There you go. There you go. So Shirley, thank you. Fixing the microphone? Julian?
Deluca? Hello and good evening. My name is Julian Deluca. I'm a father of seven children. I coached OJW freshman football. I've been here actually for two years, but my family has pretty good roots here. My aunt, who actually is here, is the principal of COVID, so thank you for that. I'm here to discuss the mask mandates, the vaccines, and I just believe that, I'm, I'm, I'm taking no speech, I'm not a fancy speech guy or anything like that, so it's just kind of right off the top of my head. With me being a father of seven children, I don't know if you guys are educated in what's inside the vaccines, or if you're educated in what happens to a child or even a full-grown adult wearing a mask for seven to 10 hours. Our body has an immunity for all types of things. Naturally, we have toxins that are released. If those toxins are not being released, or so-called, they say, because my personal belief on a mask is equivalent to a mosquito and a chain link fence. So, your mask is the chain link fence, right? And this virus is a mosquito. So, if you go to the science of it, easy way to put it, I did drywall. I don't know many of you else have done drywall here, but go, sand some drywall, put a mask on, N95, all these fancy masks, right? Even a respirator. Take the mask off. How much drywall dust is gonna be on your face? A lot. Okay, so if you think that this virus is stronger than drywall dust, I mean, look at it. It's just, I personally believe that it's a propaganda. I believe that we, as Americans, have the right to say what we put in our body, what we do, that's the American dream. We are being taken advantage of by numerous agencies. I mean, look, we, as a community right now, our children, right? If they don't follow these mandates and stuff, they're going to make the children suffer. It makes no sense. Also, with this vaccine, there's numerous things in this. Do you guys have anything to understand? There's mercury, there's other people's DNA, there's acid, there's types of salt, I mean. Research it. On top of that, with these masks, children are getting sick because of the toxins they're not able to release. I mean, I've seen numerous people go into a hospital because their lungs are infected because of it. And I don't believe it's fair. With me having seven children, I don't want my kids wearing masks. My son has asthma. There's no reason for it. I'm also gonna ask that everyone educate before making the decision what happened to worrying about the children, because to me, it sounds like population control. It sounds like we are being forced to do these things, and if we don't, you're gonna be in trouble. And I don't believe that that's okay.
Julian, thank you for sharing your thoughts. Speaking of the masks and the vaccines, and I think I could use toxins for both of them, what you're saying is that if you, what you're encouraging all of us to do is study?
Yes, exactly.
And by studying, we will find out that no one should be wearing a mask for five, six hours a day, because by definition, you're supposed to be breathing out toxins away from your body, and what you're doing is trapping them inside a mask and bringing them back in. And so, you witness people, you know, people who have got sick, had to go to hospitals because of issues. You're saying the same thing about the vaccine, that there are toxins in the vaccine that we may be unaware of that are in the vaccine, and hence, that's gonna create the same kind of issue. We're gonna have people going to hospitals, people having medical care because of adverse reactions to the vaccines. You used a couple analogies when talking about the mask. You said, you know, if, when you talk about the particle size of a vaccine or the COVID virus and a mask, you used the idea of a mosquito and a chain link fence. The likelihood that a mask is gonna stop that virus is like a chain link fence stopping a mosquito. And then you used a practical explanation of drywall, which I have done some, and I don't like it, that whether you wear a mask or not, after working for five, six hours in drywall, you take the mask off, you're gonna have drywall dust all around your nose and all around your face because you've sucked it in. It's gotten through the mask and it's gotten onto your face, and hence, you breathe some of it in. And so, you're using that as an illustration as to the effectiveness of the mask. But then you went back to like, just simply governmental freedoms. We live in America, and it should be our choice, and that you feel like our freedoms are being taken away. And then lastly, that everyone should educate themselves around these issues.
I agree.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Alvarado?
Hello. My name is Sarah Alvarado. Most of what I wanted to say is everything covered, but I just wanted to add on to what the other parents were saying, the importance of mental health in students. So, mental health has hit a lot of people in different ways throughout this pandemic, I think, than it has ever. So, my elementary-age child is struggling with, so she's in second grade, so she's kind of, I feel like the pandemic has kind of been, since she's been in kindergarten. But the social distancing and masks and not being able to read facial expressions of like a teacher or a friend or anything like that, it's kind of affected her to where she kind of feels like alone, or she feels like kids don't like her, or like people don't want to be near her. So she struggles with that. And me as a parent, I mean, all I can do is, you know, try to encourage her, like, you know, explain to her that that's not the case, but it still affects her mentally. And I also have a high schooler that is dealing with some of the mental effects of the masks and, you know, bullying kids. And I feel like kids are either for masks or against masks, and it's the same for teachers, that kids will almost like get harassed or they're put into two different categories of like Republican and Democrat, and it shouldn't be like that. Like, it should be the parent's choice or the student's choice to, if they feel that that's beneficial for them. So, if a kid wants to wear the mask to protect themselves, that should be their choice. It shouldn't be like forced on everybody's throat and choice made for them. That's all.
Sarah, thank you. So uniquely, what you're wanting to remind us of is that all of this is taking a toll?
Yeah, absolutely.
The remedy, the masking, the things that we've done as a society to try to stem off of pandemic or whatever it is that we want to talk about. off of pandemic or whatever it is that we want to talk about, that that in itself is having an effect. You have an elementary child that is now having socialization issues, feels isolated. The ability, the ability not to see their teacher's face is all kind of desensitizing and disassociating. You have a high schooler that believes that it is only added to the natural stuff that you see in high school, which is size.
Yeah, so.
And so, again, like others, you said, you know, shouldn't we in America as parents be the ones who have the choice?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Hello. My name is Leslie. I have two children in the district at Oxford Elementary School. And first off, I would like to thank Mr. Donnelly for always applying to my emails, taking my phone calls. It really helps a parent when you feel hurt. And I know that we've covered this month after month as far as the mandates, and I just want to tell you a little bit about my experience that my kids are having in the district. And it seems as though the government only wants to throw around the Constitution if they feel it works in their favor, while they have no problem infringing on our constitutional rights. I should not have to ask you for the right to choose. I should not have to ask you to vote for my right to choose as a parent what's best for my children. And my children should not be crying when they receive a mask waiver from a pediatrician that they're afraid to go to school and what's going to happen. And that was exactly what happened with my children.
So explain, I mean, I missed before the crying. What's the reason that they got emotional?
My, my kids got a mask waiver from their pediatrician because they were having an adverse reaction to wearing masks all day.
Right.
My son chews on his, unfortunately, and it was causing a rash. My daughter has sensitive skin and the same thing. She had sores around her mouth that were not going away because they're in these masks all the time. And on a rainy day, they're, when they don't get to outside, they don't get that mask break except for at lunch. And they're nine and 11, and they're not going to ask, can I please take a break? They're just, you know, they're not going to.
So with the waiver, then what, what, why were they upset?
When they, when we first got the waiver and we sent them into the school, it was I'm going to be questioned. Am I going to get in trouble? Because my children were two children that were sat home because they were marked unmasked at attendance. My children were not asked to put on a mask. In fact, my son's teachers had said, you know, we need, as a reminder, everybody needs to go put on a mask. My son went to the locker where I did have masks in their backpack and he put one on. My daughter was never asked. I watched my son walk down to the office, because I'm not allowed in the office because I don't wear masks to the school. So they keep the door locked, and I have to stand in the free way every time I get my children from school. And the principal opened the door and walked my children out to me with my son wearing a mask. And when I mentioned to somebody in a private group on Facebook that my son was sat home with wearing a mask, somebody screenshot, wrote, posted, and sent it to the principal, and he followed. And I again let him know that yes, he sat there and talked to me and scolded me for my children not having masks, and that he sent my, he talked to me while my son was wearing a mask. After that, my children wore masks. They really love being in school. They both love their teachers. They love their, they're finally treated over all last year. Apparently, I'll make a very good homeschool teacher. And, you know, it is worse. But they got, ended up getting mask waivers. My daughter was worried. She was going to be troubled. She was going to be questioned. And she doesn't want an issue with her teacher or anything else. And in Spanish, a student asked my son, why don't you have to wear a mask? And he, whether polite or not, he's nine, he said, it's none of your business. And my son was then scolded for telling the student that it was none of his business. Instead of the teacher saying, maybe saying, I don't like the words you use, but it isn't your business, because whether my student has a waiver or doesn't, it isn't anybody else's business. It's just me and the school. And it's really putting our kids in a really bad position where they're worried. My healthy child went eight days of school in October because she sat to the right or to the left of a student at lunch that hadn't tested positive. Not one symptom, nothing. She missed two school projects, tests, and was sent home with homework for me to teach while working full time and taking her brother to school. And not only that, they have the fifth grade concert coming up, and we received a letter. The students have to stand onstage with those lights and in the heat in a mask. They can pull them down, but the 300 plus parents who we attend don't have to wear masks. So while I understand that you're adhering to what the Oakland County Health Department has put in place, we have had homecoming, games, assemblies, downtown events, where these children are together all the time, and they're not wearing a mask.
All right. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. I want to make sure that I understand one point before I capitalize what I had just said. There was a day that both of your children were marked as unmasked, but in fact, your daughter?
My son put a mask on.
Your son went out to the locker and got a mask. So from your perspective, he complied?
He did. But it is, my, to my understanding, policy at Oxford Elementary School is that at attendance, the students are marked as masked or unmasked.
Got it. And so you were called then to pick up your children, even though your son had a mask on, and he was wearing that mask when you were talking to the principal? Do I understand that part right?
Correct. And the principal told me that he would explain it to me as simply as possible, that I either put my kids in a mask or don't send them to school.
Okay. And that was, and that was before you got the waiver?
Yes.
Since the waiver, since the waiver, your kids are under pressure because now they're pointed out, now, now, you know, they're worried about the pressure that they might be under from fellow students or even people at the school, because now that change has taken place. And similar to someone else who said that, that either all of a sudden there's kind of like this pressure of size that is taking place.
And that's almost from students. They're worried about, I mean, most of the other students are like, where can I get one of those? Because I don't want to have to wear
They don't want to discipline the teachers.
Right. They're nervous. They don't want to, they want to be respectful. You know, I taught my children, don't get in trouble at school. Here in Ohio, it's more trouble at home because we are respectful. And they're worried that that's a sign of being disrespectful now wearing a mask, and that's just not the case.
Got it. Got it. Due to the rules around COVID and quarantining and that kind of stuff, your child was in school only eight days, you know, in October?
Yes, technically seven and a half is the day that she went back with a half day.
Due to the fact that she was in proximity to, in a whole investigation of who you were around at those times, right?
Yeah, only quarantining the students directly to the right and to the left of the student that was positive.
And near the end, you wanted to point out the, what I think you were, you were saying is kind of like the idiocy of some kids on a stage who have to wear a mask, but 300 people watching those kids in the same room. All right. Do I have it?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Marcy?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Marcy Andrew. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And you tipped that microphone. Thank you. There you go.
Sorry. My name is Marcy Andrew. Thank you for allowing me to speak and for the other moments that always answer the phone with anyone. Definitely appreciate that. So we've been coming here, my daughter and I, every month, and while we truly believe in the word, that this mask mandate is not quite part of this, at least most of you do. And in fact, at the last meeting, it was so bad that we felt we were not holding our oath to serve the children and felt like we couldn't get a resolution, we would have to resign. So I thought, well, at least we don't be going back to here because you called us on this. Then I learned that Mr. Crow received a phone call from the Oakland County Health Department seeking me to the place to hold a vaccine clinic because they couldn't find a building this far out, which as we all know is a lie, because they actually called every school to host a vaccine clinic at school, or at least hosted one. So I thought, well, what would Mr. Crow say? My thought was, well, when you help us, we'll help you. That would have been the nice answer. But instead of saying, no, he says yes, and we'll host two of them. But then it went a step further, and email went out, letting us all know, come to our vaccine clinic. You didn't outright endorse it, but you sent an email from this school email provider, letting us know how we can come. Now I know it's not during school hours, but let me let you know right now, my daughter won't be in school either of those days. She will be at the school with me protesting these. I am asking that you cancel these immediately unless you've signed a contract to host these. Now let me also share a post from a moment online, I'll just say reverse and call it, to all the deplorables pretending they'll stop us from vaccinating your kids. You are wrong. We can and we will vaccinate them. You can't stop us. Just take a look at the elementary school in Michigan that has a vaccine clinic built into its school. I've also learned that the World Health Organization has put something out, I haven't seen this myself, I've heard this though, that says just by sending your kids to school, this is giving consent. I know we've brought this up before and it's been discussed, and you said this would never happen in Oxford, but you also said we'd never have a clinic in Oxford either, and here we are. And again, like I said, Peyton will not be there except in protest. So I'm asking you, take a stand on this and handle these clinics. You won't lose funding, you won't lose immunity, you won't pay fines if you do this, which I know is part of the problem of handling the mask mandate. Prove our kids mean more to you and that this is about choice, and you will not add to Oakland County Health Department's power by allowing them to use you and your buildings to host these clinics. Even though you say you aren't endorsing them, you are saying yes to what they are doing is by letting them do these evil things, hosting clinics at the school. And you've been sending this message to the parents that you almost agree with what's going on by allowing them to come to our school. So I ask that you tonight hope to cancel these clinics. Thank you.
Marcy, thank you. By the way, and thank you for coming to the meetings and sharing. And your main point is on vaccination clinics and our giving permission for them to be here in November and in December. If you may appraise, our response should have been, when you help us, we'll help you. Ultimately, what you're asking us to do is consider declining these two offers and because it's right for our kids.
Your sponsor gets vaccinated, don't find them a patient for this.
Yep, yep. I hear you. I hear you. You're saying, don't use our schools.
Yes.
I hear you. You quoted a woman who made a post about, we, we can and we will end up vaccinating your kids, which is probably very consistent with the whole downhill effect. But things change, and they change, and every 30 days, something's changing. And so you're asking us to cancel those clinics so that we don't participate in adding to the Oakland County Health Division's power. Thank you. Thank you. Peyton, are you wanting to talk to us today?
Yes, I am. Hello, my name is Peyton Andrew. I'm a Fricker, and I am here to talk about the vaccine clinics and the masks. So I have been coming every month for a while because I believe that most of you are, like, don't wear masks, but you're just, like, you don't know what's going to happen if you keep protesting, or you don't even know if you can actually protest. But I have been, I am not here for myself, because I have gotten a permanent mask reduction for my, because of all my anxiety that builds up in class, I cannot wear a mask without having a companion mask. But I am here for my friends. My friends have, like, some of them have bad anxiety like I do, some of them get stressed easily, some, like, one of my friends actually have asthma too. So it's really hard for him. So, and, but they don't come to these things. They're scared to voice their opinion because they feel they won't get hurt with everything going on. America does not feel like America right now. We would freedom speech. The last meeting was so bad that some of you said you wouldn't, if you're going to give this a thought, that you had, that you resigned. And this does not seem like, really like solving it to me. You're, you were, I loved, I was so happy when you said that on November 9th, you were going to make an optional appearance if they didn't respond. And what I'm hearing is that responses they gave you, you were not very happy with. You're pretty disappointed with your responses. And you were, you were threatening that you were going to do what you had a written plan, if they could give you a good answer. And when they give you a disappointing answer, and then they tell you that they want to set up a vaccine clinic in our schools, when there are so many other places where they could do it, where you could bring your kids to get vaccinated, if you wanted them to get vaccinated. And then you say, oh, yes, yes, we'll do that. You know what? Let's actually build two. That's better, so much better. And we're also doing them at all the other schools, and you can go like several different places to get vaccinated. So, also, with the vaccine clinics, I understand it's after hours and stuff, but I am 100% okay. Like, my mom was like, are you okay if you come to the school and you protest? Are you 100% okay with missing school because you're here on these days because you have a lot of absences? I do. I have like six absences and three classes. All of those are absences that I have for some reason or another. I have like, and I have not been in school a lot recently for reasons that I do not feel like getting into. But I can't really afford to be missing days because even with Haiku, I'm, I'm a much better visual learner, and I learn a lot better when I'm actually in person. Staying out, I have many days, as it's going to take with these vaccine clinics could either make me have to do summer school because I'm missing so many good days, or it's going to cause my goal of a 4.0 this year to drop down, or something's going to happen and I'm going to get in trouble for something for missing so many days, or I'm going to be mad at myself for my grade dropping and stuff like that. Also, that you said yourself that this, that the board said and stuff that there was going, the whole point of it was for, like, they can't really do anything unless kids are getting hurt. Well, I'm hearing a lot of people complaining about wearing masks every day. They hate it a lot, but they're too scared to do anything about it because they're scared their boys won't get hurt. And from the last meeting, you have, I believe you have also heard a lot of information about higher risks of suicides. And I believe there was even one or two in this district, not Oxford, I don't think yet, but in the district. What happens when there starts, when that one or two starts to become four, five, maybe even 10? Then what are you going to do about it? You're going to say, oh my gosh, kids are actually dying. We need to take this off now. By then, it would be too late. There was always We need to take this off now. By then it would be too late. There would always already be kids dead. Mental health issues, start with that and help. And I have not been wearing a mask, yeah, sorry, I'll wrap it up. I haven't been wearing a mask. So one of my other friends had a mask presumption and I've been hanging out with him a lot. And I hang out a lot with my friends after school and none of us wear masks. We hug, we touch. We are super close. Not one of us have gotten sick or had to miss a day because you were sick. But my one friend on the bus that double masks has gotten sent home because she was sick for two weeks. When she wears a mask and she wears it right and she follows all the rules, when me and my friends have been touching and interacting, I've not gotten sick once.
All right, Peyton, thank you, thank you. Um, eighth grade. Multiple times mentioning like your mom, concerns about the vaccine clinic and us sponsoring such a clinic. Also concerned about your friends. Equally, they're feeling pressure. They're feeling scared. There are negative effects that they're experiencing psychologically and emotionally. And you brought up, uh, the pressure anxiety, which would lead potentially to suicide. All as a, at what point Downey, Dan, Downey was calling, which was a board act. Yes, you mentioned that America, you thought there was a freedom of speech. And back to the vaccine clinics. Uh, oh, then, then you mentioned things about your own concerns, missing, missing days. Uh, missing days because we're having clinics and your mom's going to pull you out. The fact that that's going to have on your grades, the fact that's going to have on your morale, those kinds of things. And basically, you're wanting us to know that what we're doing is hurting the kids too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Group? Oh, Patrick D. and Bobby Group, Kristen?
Yeah, I don't know that we need the full 10 minutes, but maybe. First of all, thank you guys. Thank you, uh, board members that are in attendance. Uh, Mr. Downley, Mr. Throm, appreciate you guys very much. I do want to kind of mirror what Shirley stated. In the way that we've handled this, these meetings, the way that you guys have handled them. You know, they're kind of boring. I think that our media people left. They were expecting something more, I think. But I think you guys have handled this great and I appreciate that. Um, it's been 11 weeks of this, coming up on three months, uh, quarter of the year. And I will say, well, I hate that you're pushing the vote off again. Uh, I am glad that you're holding the other board members accountable. Uh, they're a part of this team and they should be here tonight. I want to read a poem, and I'm not usually a poetry guy, but, um, I really like this poem. So it says, "I dreamt in a studio, or I, I dreamt I stood in a studio and watched two sculptors there. The clay they used was a young child's mind and they fashioned it with care. One was a teacher. The tools she used were books, music and art. The other, a parent, working with a guided hand and a gentle, loving heart. Day after day, the love, the teacher toiled with a touch that was deaf and sure, while the parent labored by her side and polished and smoothed it over. And when at last their task was done, they were proud of what they had wrought. For the things they had molded into the child could neither be sold nor bought. And each agreed they would have failed if each had worked alone. For behind the teacher stood the school and behind the teacher, or behind the parent, the home." So I want to read that. And now I'm going to go over to the Oxford Board. Uh, this is the Board of Education statement. It's on your website. Um, "The Board of Education is an elected body which serves as a trustee for the Oxford Community School District. The seven school district residents who are elected to four-year terms express and represent the views of the community in issues affecting education. They set policy, approve educational goals and curriculum changes, and provide direction to the superintendent." It goes on. But now I'm going to read the, um, this is part of the revised school code, uh, 38010, which talks about the rights of parents and legal guardians, duties of public schools. "It is the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching and education of their children. The public schools of this state serve the needs of the pupils by cooperating with the pupils' parents and legal guardians to develop the pupils' intellectual capabilities and vocational skills in a safe and positive environment. The schools are to work hand in hand with parents in educating our children. The school board is to represent and cooperate with the people and parents of this community in how the schools function. We've had hundreds of parents come to these meetings expressing their concerns and asking for choice. We've got a group of close to 1,000 parents that concern community members who have expressed their concerns and asking for choice. I've even had teachers and staff from these schools, this district, reach out to me expressing their concerns and asking for choice. I'm not elected or hired to facilitate these things. You guys are. We want the choice and I'd ask that you not wait until the next meeting to, to vote on that."
Sidekick here. We've been here, meeting after meeting, meeting with you guys to give us the choice to make medical decisions for our children. Every, let me remind you that these are our children, the Oxford Community Schools' children, the Oakland County's children, our children. Every meeting, we have laid out the negative effects of masks on our children. We've given you a list of hundreds of parents who support us. And this is just a small number in comparison to the number of parents in the entire state and across the country who also support what we're doing. Uh, we have shown you the corruption within the county and the state as a whole. We have FOIA requests that the county refuses to respond to, even though they are required to by law. We have shown you that the county health department, uh, does not have the authority to enforce masks on their kids. Their own attorneys have said it. That leads me to the fact that the same attorneys who are giving our district legal advice on enforcing the mandate are the same attorneys who are representing the county and or the health department. I don't understand how that is okay with anybody and that in itself should show you to the bone that the same attorneys that are giving you guys advice on enforcing this mask mandate are the same attorneys representing the county. It doesn't make any sense. How long will this board continue to play the devil's advocate? We've given the board, we've given this board plenty of time to unmask our kids. We have played with you to let our, let us parents make medical decisions for our children. We have done this because we are nothing but respectful of you all and all of your hard work that you have done to try and get to the truth. But we now have no choice but to file suit against the board and the district. We've instructed our attorneys to prepare the lawsuit and have it filed this week. We hope that you make the right decision and put an end to this before it moves on to mandated vaccines. Like you said, Mr. Downley, this isn't about the children to the state or the county. This is about control and it's about politics. Will, will you guys be okay with this when the county tells you that all of these kids have to be vaccinated to attend your district? Be the district that leads the way for other districts. Thank you.
Uh, first was a thank you for handling this the way that we have. Obviously with the use of the poem and the use of our own verbiage in our Board of Education descriptions, 38010. What you're saying is that we're breaking that, we're breaking that bond between the parents and the school. And hence now this, this marriage of the, the house and the school molding the character of a child is now becoming lopsided and one-sided where the school or the authority has removed your ability to be part of that and you're not being heard. You represent over 1,000 concerned citizens who simply want the right to choose. Our choice, our kids, our families, our choices. You talked to us about the negative effects. You touched base on corruption, uh, within the county and the state. You, I think you were trying, you were mentioning some of the things that I read on the last document about Oakland County Health Department and the, the attorney's argument that they kind of separate themselves from the application. And hence, they're not, they're saying, we can't be the injured, the party doing the injury because we haven't said what to do. Uh, and so you're once again asking us to stand up for you. We are your elected, uh, citizens. We're one of you and we represent you. And, uh, you would like us to wake up and do that uh, before, uh, we face, uh, a lawsuit ourselves, um, that is going to be enacted this week. Thank you. Kit, K-I-T?